And if you haven't had a chance yet to read the minutes, please do that and I'll look for a motion. Any motion up there? We're just looking at eight three exactly.
That's correct.
Uh, can we make sure for a second?
Second.
Any comments, additions, directions? All in favor? Great. All opposed, five.
And then looking at the minutes from the previous meeting which we already approved.
Yep.
There were some changes.
In the last two paragraphs under Brett Martin's, I believe.
And you were questioning anything there?
Um, I'm taking a look. Well, I still feel that in the last paragraph, middle line, 700 square feet should be 800 square feet. In the second paragraph under that section, it lays it out as a 700 and a 100. And then comes in the second paragraph, I just feel like we should make it clear that it's a total of 800.
So, so you think the second paragraph and the third paragraph should be equal?
Well, I'll read it, I guess. So, second paragraph. "In order to bring the property into the 20% of purged lock coverage limitations, 700 square feet of the existing concrete must be removed and revegetated. The property owner also agreed to remove an additional 100 square feet of the existing fault rate of establishing a vegetation bucket into the ramp." So, I like that. Then when we get to the third paragraph. "To approve the application with the condition that all stormwater mitigation practices are followed, including removing and revegetating." It says 700 square feet of existing concrete and installing a 10-square-foot buffer at the end of the block, I feel like the 700 square feet should be changed to 800 square feet.
But then it seems to me that that's then adding another 10 by 10 at the bottom of that to make it an additional 100.
Well, installing a 10-foot, uh, 10-square-foot buffer, it doesn't, um, doesn't speak to the removal of any concrete. That's kind of like a buffer could be vegetation, it could be crushed stone, it could be just open ground.
So, if we change it to eight, revegetating 800 square feet of existing concrete.
Right, which in the previous paragraphs is what it spells out, the 700.
Right, but separated.
Right, well, then we can, now then we can wrap it together.
I think we'd have to almost go 700 and then 100, you know, if we're gonna add a phrase there, right? So that we know we're talking about apples and apples?
Rather than changing.
Well, I just feel, I feel like it's a little bit too big, we're still beginning to set it.
Well, I mean, I'm all for fixing it, I'm not.
Do you want where it says 10 square feet in parenthesis foot? I don't know. Read to me what you wanted to say.
If you, what if you said 700 square feet of existing concrete and an additional 100 feet buffer as it is in the, um...
Yeah, yeah, we could just reiterate, I would do the second paragraph again.
Let me do that.
Just make the motion what is in the second paragraph.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, happy, it said, do we, uh, do we vote on that, on the changes? Because I need some help there.
I'll make a motion that we change the, uh, minutes from July 20th. So that the, uh, the motion includes the verbiage from the second paragraph which states the additional 100 square feet of removed cement.
Actually, shouldn't it read what we approved last time? Word for word?
You think that's in the third paragraph, you feel like that's word for word what we, the motion that we approved?
I see, so now is what we added now to the second paragraph, now we're doing the third paragraph.
To make them all come together?
It's, it's kinda nitpicky, but I just, I still feel like the third paragraph only allows any way that.
I mean, the bottom line, we want that 10 feet, 10 square feet taken care of and then revegetated at the bottom of that.
10 feet buffer?
Yeah.
So, if it's 20 feet long, it's not 100 square feet or 10 square feet?
No, no.
Right, this thing says 10 square feet, I should say 100 square feet.
Right, right.
Or 10-foot wide buffer.
10 by 10 or 100.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta make that, that's incorrect too.
Yeah, yeah, I'll fix that.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Is there a second to, uh, to add his motion then?
Yes, sir.
All right, any more comments? All in favor of that change? All right, great. Let's do that one again. Oh, okay, can we go for pause for a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I assume your business.
I came up on another town's website, it uses the same whole darn laptop right here. I have a different computer in my house.
I assume then that the, uh, the wedding is all business and we're just moving that along till we have the, uh...
Yep. We'll wrap to the forestry issue.
All right, and the same thing with Camp El Sol, okay, so those are just there because they are in fact all business to be taken care of over the next few weeks. Um, so now we are back to the forestry issue, timber harvest. And where, Steve, is that you jumping in or we?
Yeah, I'm pretty much gonna pass everything off to Oliver Markowitz, our state board's here in the area here, he's kind of the education specialist fellow. You guys come right up and sit if you'd like. Welcome, Oliver.
Thank you.
I assume Oliver's up to date as to where we're at as far as the discussion from two weeks ago?
That's right, what I've asked him specifically to touch base on and then to just move forward with questions is the idea that it seems one of our larger concerns is what we have for regulations and restrictions on sub-10 acre wetlands and these smaller ideas, whether the first over streams, anything under 10 acres, forested wetlands or these, um, undetermined wetlands, non-wetlands, how these things are protected along the way. Because it seemed like there was a big gap that we had in the understanding of what happens in normal timber harvesting practices of the state, that these style harvests aren't somehow regulated to protect water quality or soil erosion. So, I kinda said to go ahead and start off with the, you know, here's what happens when the harvest starts and here's where you are governed by this set of regulations versus the other. Without getting too deep into the pocket brush of the data on it. And then to talk a little bit about where we are with statewide standards and the processes to see whether we can decide as a board that we do or don't want to move forward with statewide standards.
Okay.
So, that's my introduction.
I'd like to get a clarification on where we are right now, this is Oliver.
He's right here.
Are we not in compliance because through, you know, written, uh, bit of oversight, whatever, we've never separated the RP zone that is applicable to residential and commercial development, i.e. under 10 acres.
Currently, currently I understand us not to be in compliance with statewide standards right now from some new information that we have from today for three reasons. The sub-10 acre wetland that we've talked about still is on the table, we still have that in our verbiage.
We haven't separated it out?
We haven't separated it out. Uh, and number two, the, um, forester, use of a forester within the resource protection and shore land zone, which while doesn't change the performance standards in the woods. Evidently, Augusta will kick us out of a statewide standard compliance, as well as the notification that we have sent to the town at the same time as the state. So, it seems that the...
You don't like that either?
They don't like that either.
This is unfortunate.
So, I don't particularly care for either of those two parts of it because I do think that performance is performance.
Yeah.
Science is science and the procedure is procedure.
Yeah.
I don't agree with that philosophically with the state, but that's not my decision, so. So, right now, currently, we are not in compliance for a number of reasons and we have to determine whether we don't or not.
Thank you, Steve.
Was there a third one you said?
Use of a forester. We currently have the notification sent to the town at the same time as the state. Which isn't burdensome to anyone, and Ken, we just had one reach in today that was sent to Augusta six weeks ago. So, the idea behind having some town supervision of this and Ken watching over harvests as they happen is really not feasible if he's not getting these things until six weeks after from Augusta. So, again, I disagree with both the forester and the, um, notification part because I think that's just the town, you know, guarding itself without having a performance-based change standard. But evidently Augusta sees that as being a variance which will prevent us from being a category two or three.
One or two.
One option, one or two. So, there's a...
Ken, very good word.
Very different.
That's okay.
Does Oliver get notice?
Notice?
When Ken gets notice?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, um...
Oh, in a timely manner, do you get notice the same time Augusta does?
What I, no, he gets it when Ken gets it.
Yeah, I don't get upset, to me, um, the Rangers get them sent to you, them, I think probably around the same time that Ken gets it. They're, they're the ones that are tasked with inspecting harvest. Um, the only, the only way I usually go to a harvest is if I get a complaint. And at that point, once I get a complaint, I get the location, most of the time, I'll have to call Augusta and they'll have to dig through a pile. What the issue is right now is there's, um, hundreds of these coming in and there's one woman who has to input them into a system and it's a little bit outdated and we're working on changing it, but, um, so that's, I experienced the same issues that you guys have, but, um, you know, it's, it's worked out until now.
So, so assuming we were all in agreement and in equal as far as the state regulations and acting regulations. What would make it better, why would that be better for us in acting to be able to oversee things? Go ahead.
If I have an issue, I can call him.
And because we're both in, if we were both in agreement, he could jump in.
Correct.
If we were not.
If I call him, he looks up acting, he's on the phone. That's the most he's gonna do.
It's literally that.
I don't wanna take her phone, but yeah, I'll, I'll have to. You know, if you, if you need assistance.
He calls up the city chaplain and then he's busy.
You know, if you need help measuring the basal area or something of that nature, you'd have to hire a licensed forestry, I guess, you know, see if you do it or however the town would actually do it.
So, enforcement issues would be tough because it's beyond my scope to go out and look at forestry cap to see a violation. It's easy on the edge of a wetland to calculate or in the shoreline zone, but in, you know, anyways, that was easy, it was much more difficult.
So, so effectively then, everything that we did last year was a step in the right direction. But it's for not to make it work for you.
Well, I didn't really think last year we were talking about releasing the town's resource detection back to the state totally for timber harvests. We really didn't talk about that till we were almost at the end of it, having, having what we're going as, as a true gold. So, on this map here, and these, this color here, the oranger is a 250-foot buffer. We would have to actually look at these to see if there is a forested wetland that was creating this to be 10 acres or greater. Some of these may disappear, but all these other colors are definitely less than the 10 acres and those would all be eliminated as far as protected areas for timber harvest purposes.
Look, so that was something that I think I was supposed to explain as far as, they're not, they're not completely eliminated from any protection. There are protections on these areas. The difference being is with the shade retention standards, most of them will be, uh, I don't know if you guys have gone through, I think I saw you had one of those maps that, when you get over the 10 acres in size for a wetland, you have the three options, um, for shade retention, which is you can harvest 40% of the volume, leave 60 square feet, or a third option where you have to prove that whatever you're gonna do is gonna, um, be better for the environment. Uh, with the smaller wetlands, they're still protected from sedimentation, bank integrity still needs to be protected. That's, um, under a different law than statewide standards, that's under natural resource protection act. So, that covers all sedimentation, that would make the difference.
But that's not gonna be a forested wetland.
Forested wetlands different, yeah.
Correct.
These are for open water wetlands. Forested wet, uh, wetlands, because of the fact that there's trees there, you have to be dominated by trees 20 feet, um, high and greater, that is gonna provide protection to the soil, um, the organic matter as well as the trees that are gonna be remaining are gonna, most of the time, filter out sediment that's gonna move off site. They still will be protected.
I guess I'm a little confused still, let's assume you have an eight-acre forested wetland.
Okay, forested, yep.
And you, by state standards or my understanding, that it can be harvested.
Yep.
And harvested means if one of the options that you said before, 40% of the trees would have to remain.
That wouldn't apply there, because those are short, that would be, um...
Open water wetland.
Open water, so that would be when you're operating adjacent to open water. Forested wetlands, you're allowed to actually enter them and harvest trees. Whereas an open water wetland, you are not permitted to drive through it.
So, where would that eight-acre forested wetland be protected? How would it be protected?
Under forest, under the forest protections act, which is a separate, I can pass any of these, anybody wanna look along with? I think I have enough of them to share maybe.
I'll get one later, but Tom, you know, you're gonna have one.
So, uh, so that would be under the forest protections act, where you're talking about clearcutting regeneration standards. So, you know, that's where you would have, you have to retain 30 square feet of basal area per acre, unless you're talking about doing overstore removal, that type of stuff, where you would have regeneration requirements to the same. But that would be covered under something separate than statewide standards, which is...
Well, the statewide standard specifically covers this area within 250 feet of particular open water wetland.
Yeah.
The, the main timber harvest practice act covers timber harvesting everywhere around it.
A forested wetland is treated as non-wet, pretty much.
And that's where our big concern is, that seems, am I right, Governor? Right, it's, it's the ones where, that are forested.
Yeah.
And, and we have an issue with keeping them, for some of us anyway, of keeping them as they are.
Yep.
And protected, and the state says, no, it's gonna be part of the harvest if in fact that's what you wanna call it.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, I guess that's the way it is, it, you know, it hasn't caused problems most places in the state, I mean, it's still, like I said, there's still protections, uh, harvesting in a forested wetland, you're still gonna have the ability to, um, filter out that sediment because of the organic matter that's in there versus when you're in an open water wetland, you don't have those trees to help filter. You're not, you know, we're not talking about pulling stumps to these areas, so.
The comment that I would have to make toward that end would be, you're gonna have to specifically tell me what you're trying to protect. Because if you go about this with the idea that, oh, we're just protecting everything and if it's wet, we need to protect it. Well, that's great, but we do have to become a little more specific with what we're talking about. If it's a matter of water temperature, if it's a matter of biographers, if it's a matter of, um, soil erosion, soil moving in different places, these things are addressed within the main forest practices act in that book.
Yeah.
So, I just don't want us to be thinking that, you know, we can toss out the idea of more protection is always better or protect, 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 and yes, they need to be protected, but there is some protection there. So, if we're talking about writing ordinances that are much more specifically trying to protect than as the foresters are working on these jobs and scientists, if you wanna call me that, I wanna know what you're trying to protect with each specific level ordinance. What is it, is it movement of water, is it movement of soil, so that we can actually address it with the science of it? Because the idea behind protected equals buffer is just too broad-based to really address things properly to revive, if need be, really, is my point. So, you know.
I have a question, just to the board in general, that maybe we could kind of showcase. Does the board, uh, feel confident that, um, because of the activity at town meeting, uh, very recently, that the townspeople are strongly supportive of protecting smaller wetlands vis a vis commercial and residential development? This is the battle that took place over two years maybe, when the select board, previous select board was trying to, uh, pull the smaller wetlands out of any protection. And the townspeople threw us several acrimonious town meetings, said, no, we wanna maintain those.
Maintain the small, the 10-acre buffers.
But...
And that is pertaining to non-timber harvesting buildings, you said.
Exactly, exactly. So, I think the mistake that maybe the board made was not clearly separating those two, uh, areas of activity to harvesting from commercial residential development vis a vis the small mountains. So, I'm just curious if that's the sense that the board members have of, of why we're discussing this now. It's not that we didn't want to protect them, we wanted to, I think, maintain what the townspeople had affirmed back in June of 2016, I think it was. And yet, we, we were fully aware of the notion of the property rights issues raised when we would, uh, carry those same protections into the timber harvesting now. I mean, that's my understanding of kinda why I'm here now. And, and hopefully, there's a, there's a fix that maybe Steve and Oliver and Ken and Cookup would very simply and clearly separate those two realms of, of, uh, activity and how they're, uh, protected under town limits.
See, I, I guess I look at it a little differently and say, it seems to be we either have to jump on board with what the state does so that Ken has a handle on what's going on or has a resource, or we decide that we're, we're not going to follow that line and, um, keep our own acting agenda.
Well, why, why couldn't we rather, I mean, that's like throwing the baby out the bath a lot. Why couldn't we maintain the acting definition of RP relative to the smaller wetlands and uphold water quality issues and habitat issues and numerous issues that were affirmed at town meeting with the smaller wetlands, but just separate it out relative to the activities that are carried on.
So, you didn't say forestry?
Yeah.
As the activity there?
That's a common thing that's done, uh...
Yeah, how many square feet, it was 40 square feet of basal or 60 per acre?
So, those are the shade retention options and one, like what Steve was saying, what you're protecting with those is water temperature mainly.
Yep.
Uh, so that's for streams, for cold water fish habitat, shade retention standards to protect that. So, you have three options when you're working in areas with buffers that require shade retention. You have 40% of the volume, so that's 40% of the total basal area, uh, per acre. And then you have, you can retain 60 square feet per acre. Which is the second one, the third one would be, uh, something special that...
Custom plan.
Custom plan that would have to be approved by the regional forester coordinator.
Yeah.
Very hard to...
Can, can you explain to them just what basal area is, are you calculating?
Yeah, basal area is a volume measurement taken at four and a half feet, uh, breast height. And it's the volume that the cylinder for, you know, the tree, tree takes.
Diameter of the tree or...
Surface area.
If you have the diameter of, if you have a tree, this is a small tree.
Yep.
If you have a, you measure a tree's diameter at four and a half feet above the ground, the basal area is the surface area of what that tree would, of its trunk at four and a half feet off the ground. So, it's the circle, whatever the, in square feet, so when we talk about square feet, you know, however many square feet are on the surface of that stump, if you were to cut that tree off. So, if it was a good-sized tree, it has more... It's a one-foot square, this is a good-sized tree, 40 of their last acre.
There's charts that you can look up that you can, you know, your basal area for, for size of the tree, uh, that you use a prism.
Well, this is where I told you about having the angle gauge in in 10 minutes when we're in the field next time. Hopefully, I can go over and measure some basal areas and show everyone what that actually is involved in. But that's not a hard thing to teach, it's not a hard thing to measure. It wouldn't take more than five minutes for Ken, if that were to go that direction, for him to be able to, reliably, if, if the technical board were wanting to do so, that is, measure these things. So, I, I don't want the verbiage of, you know, the technical nature of basal area or necessarily 60 square feet or 40 of these or 30 of those to necessarily trip us up at this point, because towards your point, we do have a larger level of saying, are we trying to be in compliance with the state or aren't we? If we're not, then we can write the ordinance any way that we want to.
Well, I think it's important to discuss sort of then, rather than the board understands the difference between the options one, two, and three, which are for the larger wetlands. And then the option which we would be demoted to, which is just like general land.
Right.
Which is the 40 square feet of basal area per acre, correct?
30, yeah.
30, well, I mean, that's...
But there's...
So, so the planning board needs to understand the difference between third and square feet of basal area per acre, which is what would be laid on top of our resource protection areas, or the options one, two, and three, which is more likely, I'm pretty sure the board was hoping would be able to be laid on top of the resource protection areas.
Okay.
There's, there's also...
But I think we're getting there, I mean, I understand the difference, I don't know.
There's also two cleared opening size requirements as well in those buffer zones. So, as well as those three options, there's cleared openings where, uh, within 75 feet, uh, there's no cleared openings allowed. Our definition of cleared opening is 2,500 square feet. That can't be made by removal of one tree, uh, that's the rule, even if one tree does somehow cover 2,500 square feet. Um, and then beyond, uh, 75 feet, you can have 14,000 square foot openings, anything greater than 10,000 has to be on the feet apart. So, those are...
Those are the standards that...
That's on range 14 in the book too.
Yeah, we have, we just adopted all that.
Oh, you have all that.
We are totally online with the state in terms of the verbiage, we just adopted into the book and we actually already had it in there. All we did was get rid of some extra language, so all we have is some stuff that goes above and beyond, which is, really, you guys don't even need to worry about that. It's more has to do with the town, not asking the state to be doing anything with that. It's more has to do with the town, not asking the state to be doing anything with that, which happens to also be in there.
Yep.
So.
And unfortunately, those above and beyond is what.
Can you tell us about some of the towns in the area that go with an option to not go with the state standard, things like York or Kittery where they have.
York actually just adopted statewide standards.
They did, how about Kittery or some of the towns that have other ordinances that speak to this issue?
Is Kittery, I'm trying to.
I know there's some example, maybe at Gunkwit.
Uh, yeah, Gunkwit just had, we just had an issue with Gunkwit because they passed timber harvesting ordinances and did not follow the outlined Title 12, Section 8869. One of their landowners complained to us, and they had to change all their ordinances because there's a process they had to follow when you amend timber harvesting ordinances. And if it's not followed, then it's really.
So you're sending, forgiving me for back, so they were statewide?
This actually didn't have anything to do with statewide standards.
I'm just wondering how it works in some of the towns you do. Because you have option one, two, and three, which in terms, but these are different options, like you go with the state, you.
I think a lot of times.
Not in accordance or you're on your own.
I think a lot of times these towns, from what I've known, I think a lot of stuff gets missed. If, you know, if their handler themselves, obviously, county enforcement has a lot of things to do.
Well, that's particularly why we're interested in smaller areas, that the state obviously isn't looking at them. So it's the town's responsibility to do it, and that's what our town is looking to do, so.
I, yeah, I don't, that's something I probably have to get back to you guys on, I don't know. Keeping up with all the town ordinances is beyond my capability.
Right, right, nobody's asking me to do that.
No, I don't get involved in it. If they're not option one or two, I don't get called. If I do get called, like Ken said, I can't.
You'd think it would be based more on the size of wetland. It's like, you know, the state comes and deals with their wetlands, so to speak, or they don't. I mean, it isn't, it's like we have the verbiage that's, you know, completely the same as the state dealing with different wetlands that are your wetlands, so to speak.
But the whole purpose is to have a statewide standard.
Well, we have that right across.
But you have, you have things that are above and beyond, so somebody.
That's fine, though, they're in separate areas from your jurisdiction.
I thought we could have more stringent.
Oh, we absolutely can.
Yes, but if we can have more stringent rules, or whatever you would care to call them, codes.
Outside of the shoreline zone. Shoreline zone.
I was looking up something.
These resource protection areas are in large part outside of the shoreline zone because the state defines shoreline zone differently than the county.
State shoreline zoning ordinances. Many municipalities may wish to adopt more stringent ordinances or ordinances which are completely different from the guidelines, providing such ordinances are equally or more effective than the state act.
The town is allowed to do that, it's just that the state won't enforce it.
We're not asking the state to enforce nine-acre wetlands and below regulations because they have nothing to do with you. It's more to do with the state.
You can have them come in and actually differentiate between the nine and the ten.
Well, they have it on their map, if it's not on their map, then it's the town, if it's on their map, then it's the state.
Then you would be.
That's a procedural kind of question that I think they are.
You'd be an option three town, meaning that you would be on your own for all, unfortunately, that's. I didn't make up the rules.
Yeah, well, there's no reason to, you know, change our standing just because the state has the incorrect positions, so.
There is.
But there is, if you want them to support us.
Yes.
Well, look at what happened last year. Ken had an issue on Brady's Lake, somebody was over-harvesting, you could see it.
Okay, hold on, what was that? Tell me about that project, please.
Well, personally, I didn't have much to do with it.
I mean, I know, I know where the job is, but I need to know what was incorrect about the job that is making it be such a sticking point.
Well, I would just have to ask Ken then, because I wasn't actually involved in the project. I just know that we were not in conformance with state standards at that time, yet the state did come and help us because it was a state wetland area that's on their map. So there's no, you know, it's.
Well, that was a little bit toward that end, I think, and Oliver can correct it, and I know he doesn't know.
Well, let him speak to the point, then.
It was at the time when we were, even if it was our own category was.
Yeah, the state still thought we were.
The state thought we were, they didn't, no, we were going back and forth.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, so Oliver was great enough to come out, and that particular individual did have a forester, and he stayed two fifty away, and then just selectively, he told me he was doing a selective cut.
Oh, the camp, is that?
That was a selective leave.
Was it the old camp, West Coast Camp or something? Yeah, I did, I went and checked that out because it was a confusing time. I thought you guys were statewide standards town, I went and looked at it for Ken, took some measurements, and unfortunately, they clear-cut everything beyond two fifty. But they, they had a forester, they followed the statewide standards.
Do you think Steve going down Buzzel Road, that that is thirty square feet of basal area left there?
I don't know a lot, I can't come, I don't know.
Yeah. So maybe, I mean, just for the board, I think that's key, is that the board sees what thirty square feet of basal area is per acre.
Yeah, I thought it was forty-two.
I thought it was forty-two, you said.
In the, outside of the buffer zone, thirty square feet is what defines a clear cut. Below thirty square feet of basal area will define a clear cut. If it's over five acres in size, it's going to get confusing if I start talking about clear cut regeneration standards.
Right, we're not worried about that.
So inside that buffer, that you guys saw, they had that area that they cut everything, they left the two hundred fifty-foot buffer, inside that buffer was a basal area of sixty square feet or more.
Right.
And so I, I didn't take measurements on it.
But you weren't willing to come out and look at it for us because we were in a hard situation at the time.
You guys were an option one.
We think that's the same, actually, we are closer to being in conformance with the state now than we were at that time.
Okay.
So, I mean, it seems like the state would help us.
I lied to him, told him it was state standard.
That's right.
Honestly, we didn't know.
This is the site right there. And it was a field, they'll bring it back to a field, they left the two fifty buffer right there.
Yeah.
And then just, then this really odd. And I still think it's probably greater than the thirty square feet.
Not a whole project at all, but it keeps coming back up, so I guess I'm asking, was there a violation out there that this is?
I don't bring it up to point out violation or to point out logging practices. I bring it out because the state came to our assistance for this particular issue. That's the reason, and I bring up the case.
Then that's because of confusion.
Well, it's, yes, but we're not confused.
No, it's not confusing anymore. Nothing's happening again.
It's not going to happen again.
No.
Is it feasible for us to, in, you know, to separate out by language, timber harvesting RP standards for the state relative to state definitions and retaining our protection of smaller wetlands regarding residential and commercial development?
Yes, absolutely, yes, it's not just my timber.
Right.
I think it'd be easy to put an exemption in there for timber harvesting.
Yeah, and the land use table and.
And where would that put us?
We would still need to get rid of the forester in RP thing, though.
The, the.
Notification, yes, the R four would have to go away, and the notification given to Ken at the time of the. Which I don't, I don't.
Well, it's too heavy, and let's just talk while the board come back.
I, yeah.
That's just our mindset, that's what we found out.
Yeah, we're not, we're not asking you to do anything out of the ordinary, we just, we're not, we're not, you know, that's, that's too much.
I mean, I don't, I don't, again, I don't believe that the state should not allow us to do those two things.
It's procedural.
That's my point, but again, I'm not the one making that decision. So it's back to the town to decide whether that is important enough enough to go on our own.
Oliver, have you kind of mentally tuned on that, that issue at all, on those two points?
Yeah, I talked to Steve about it, was it yesterday or the day before, and I called my higher-ups in Augusta, and those are the answers I got back, that those two things would conflict with statewide standards. Is that what your question was?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And is there, is there any reverse, can we appeal that somehow?
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, I think you could.
Well, the problem, if the system was working, I'd work to keep it, but I'm six weeks out to get notified, the jobs are done, they've been there, they've done the jobs, they're gone. And like I said, the July fourth notification, that job's probably been done for four weeks, and I just got it yesterday. So I'm not getting the notifications. The foresters, I suppose, if they look online and see if we're option one, two, or three, once they see it's down, then they just go cut.
I mean, in a, in a real sense, the act is great to govern itself on those two points. Are we being held hostage by court administration in Augusta?
Yeah, I hear you, yeah. To me, there's a difference between the mechanism of what you can cut where, which is we would be in compliance with if we change those few words, and the, and the two forester notification scenarios. One is procedural, and one is the mechanical, what can I do where? So to me, compliance means, you know, what you can do where, less or so. I mean, whether we give Ken a piece of paper or not, you wouldn't think that that would trip some landline in Augusta, making everyone think that we're like renegades. Yeah, I wouldn't think, but. So I can't address the why of that, and I would like to look forward, I'm trying to make that not happen because I would like to find the middle ground on.
Yeah.
I'm sure something that can be further discussed, I can figure out who you, you know, who needs to be in contact with.
But at the end of the day, it doesn't work. The only way it would work is if I go out, I catch them, I find them, and then they would then know the next step. That's the only way it's going to work.
And that works only if there's a phone call or by chance.
Correct. And that only works if I have plenty of time to go chase this down, too, which we don't.
It's the notification piece that the files are reading on. Because things would flow, once that was corrected, things would flow as we dreamt.
It's, uh.
That's where you. Well, I suppose this is a good time to ask the question of these two, something I ask them all the time. Have you gotten any of these things from anyone but me?
Well, you sent them to me.
The notifications.
You already have that requirement, is that?
Yes.
So you already have the requirement that people have to send you notifications when doing any timber harvesting and.
Before they do the harvesting. Yes, before the timber harvest starts, to the same time presumably as it's sent to the state. Ken has to get a copy like those two I just left on his desk.
And that's an old statute, that's ten years old.
So do you get them from anyone else? So the question would be, I mean, I'm not trying to flip this thing on its head, but we do have to ask the question of if we make these rules, are they being applied by regardless?
That's, that's the other thing, I guess, yeah, I mean, you can make all the ordinances that you want, but if there's nobody to enforce it, it's just verminism, I guess. Most, I, I assume.
We're enforcing either way in this case, so.
Right.
And then we can always hope that we'll be able to improve the system and that our verbiage will be enforceable in the future.
And if we do, and if we are backing the statewide standards, we will have more disinformation posted on the state domain website to hopefully disseminate this a little better. I mean, in a, I would be happy to go out.
As far as what, the notifications?
Just in terms of.
To post something or a date of, or waters or something.
There's not enough funding to do anything, there's not enough education in our original word, so people understand the importance of forest, you know, all these sorts of things.
I agree, yeah, this town belongs to the entire state.
Yeah, it's ridiculous, but there's no reason that should roll over and affect the towns in this sort of way, too, you know, so.
All right, so where are we at? We need to kind of sit back and think what we're going to do.
I think the board needs to discuss it because we have a couple.
We need to get maybe a name? Oliver, am I hearing that, that we need to get somebody that can talk to, or maybe I'm not hearing that correctly?
Yeah, no, I'm sure it can be, you know, further discussed, it could be some sort of further explanation as to why that doesn't match with statewide standards that I don't have right now.
Well, I'd love to see an example of a town that has their own, working with their own ordinances and working with the state.
Kennybunk has small wetlands, priority one, priority two, priority three, wetlands.
And they are.
I don't know.
Well, they might be on their own, I guess, but.
But then, I mean, when you're looking like at Gunkwit, if they have their own, how many acres do they have to harvest?
A Gunkwit is very small, statewide standards, you know.
A Gunkwit is, York was always the one that I would throw out if you have a beheaders being one that would categorize smaller wetlands for forestry application, so I would, I would have him guess at York, but.
I just got the email from Mike Walsh and DEP recently that they have adopted, and DEP has approved their ordinances. York is not one.
Well, they're just pushing towns out of it, you know, it's not, it's not the way they act.
Right, so York, so York is a resigned statewide standard?
It is, it is. Uh, Kennybunk, yeah, is apparently not, so yeah, Kennybunk does their own.
But I think they have a forest, a paid forester on staff for enforcement.
I think we need to see another system, just so we can, you know, we're hoping that we have a one system.
I mean, yeah, it just goes back to the fact that you, like you said, you'd have to have a forester or somebody that has the background, the license to be able to make these measurements and then defend any sort of enforcement that you would, you would put onto these, you know, the perpetrators of the harvest. Because they're obviously going to challenge it, you know, so you have to be a licensed forester to make those determinations.
And that was the DEP's comment when they were encouraging us to go with statewide standards. If I get into a violation, it's somewhat going to be over my head, but when we get to court and it's challenged, I don't have the background to have calculated properly.
Yeah.
Well, if we get to court, we can usually hire a forester to look at the block before we get to court.
Yeah, I think it's just something that I think needs to be discussed.
Absolutely, I don't feel unfair to be pushing towns out of having these protections.
All right, then let's, let's do that, we'll put it on hold for tonight. Unless somebody has any glaring big questions that they, that they have.
Good, good. Ken and Steve, and with the, with the help of Oliver needed or available, work on language and maybe come back to us in a month or two.
Oh, I can give you language this afternoon on how to exempt forestry out of this, but I think the board wants, should take a site walk to a site that is cut down to thirty square feet of basal area per acre, which if that Buzzel Road one's easy, we don't even have to walk anyways. Then you'll be knowing what you're talking about unless the board is confident to just go with statewide standards. Because it's pretty easy to put an exemption in there and strike out a bunch of words.
Well, I do think that that opinion in the field has to be based upon some science on the way as well.
Yeah, it would be you guys saying, this is roughly an acre, and that is roughly thirty square feet of basal area.
Well, that's, that's compliance, I'm talking about, like I mentioned before, about what is the protection that this is threatened by or not? I mean, if, if the number is, if the number is thirty, if the number is forty, if the number is sixty, if the idea is, you know, this level of cutting is bad and this is good, then we have to address what it is that's the threat. If it's, if it's by this amount or this amount, then you can't make any, you know, stand or argument or counterpoint if you don't know what it is that you're trying to try and pitch. So, you know, I can take you outside and I can show you what thirty square feet looks like, but with all due respect, if every one of you is going to look at it and go, it's pretty or it's not pretty, then you're not digging into what the science is, whether that is protecting it or it's not. So if that's the idea that we need to have a little bit of a, you know, the conversation of it looks like this needs to be put to the side a little bit more with, well, what about if it rains really hard, where would this water go? I mean, there are questions that can be answered that are science-based of the protection questions, and there are answers and questions that will be posed that will be more visceral, emotional kind of comments as well. We need to make sure that the questions are asked or, you know, can actually be talked about on a science basis, not just, I like it, so, or I don't.
Does that Buzzel Road property also forest?
There is a small stream, I think, running up from the, or running into the lake there.
I don't think it's big enough to protect, no.
There is a stream down my shore.
Yeah, comes down, follows that down, there's a, there's a second one that comes through up in there, but neither one of it's protected.
Yeah, and they, they left a buffer on that.
So the field site visit is very important, in my opinion, but we do need to be specific about what we're trying to address protection-wise out there, in my opinion. What's the threat, what's the protection?
So if we were to take the site walk, and you're available to come, would you come along? Would you be able to show us that protection that you see in a site like this, if in fact it meets the requirements that we are hoping that it does?
I'll, I'll, as I see it, for sure, yeah. I mean, if it's, if the ordinance is that this is X number of feet, that's a, that's a data point. I can give that to you the same as if I were measuring for some sort of enforcement issue.
Do you want to set up a time to go out there, you guys as a group?
I'll leave it to you guys and Ken to find the exact spot.
I was just gonna flip that around for you. So I think two things we're really looking for is a cut that has the thirty square feet of basal per acre in as far as the acre.
Sixty square feet of basal, thirty square feet is, is.
Remember statewide standards is the sixty square feet inside of two hundred and fifty feet.
And outside.
Right. Ken's, Ken's got it straight, he wants, we want to know what our resource protection district would look like if they cut it hard. So we want to know what thirty, or to see what thirty square feet of basal per acre looks like. You know, just as an example, like just.
Draw.
I mean, it would be interesting to see the other, you know, good thing, other options too, you know, so that it wasn't just one.
I, I can measure those up right in the field, so forty percent equals this, or sixty square feet equals this. I can talk about that on the fly.
Okay, all right. What's a good time for everybody? I, I guess, I'm assuming we're in agreement that we want to do this, we want to go out. Okay, when, when's good?
Oh, I think we need to find a landowner that's gonna grant us permission to enter. I mean, Buzzer Road, we can stand on the road and look, but if it's not a thirty square foot basal area per acre, then.
It's not the place we want to sit.
Yeah, correct. So I think.
I mean, I can, I'm not shorting responsibility, but nor do I want to have it seem as though I'm cherry picking a site either. But if you want me to just start looking around out there somewhere, I'm gonna get back to you with two or three options or.
I think the Town Street project is fairly thin, I don't wanna say it's under thirty square feet, but that'd be one to take a look at.
I'd actually like to know what the Buzzer Road is because, I mean, I live down the hill from there and I know how bad it looked when they first did it.
There, so there's other things that go into that as far as total.
But I understand, that's what I'm saying, is that, and you know, just as a layperson looking at it, if it looked horrible, but did they actually do something wrong, that I don't know.
Right, and that's where, that's what we'll talk about in the field for sure. So, yeah, that could be the, a reason to choose that site. That's why I'm trying to say the difference between what is legal, what is desirable, what is unesthetic, could be three completely different things.
And it took two days for them to do it.
Aesthetics is different than the prescription for the site. I mean, clear cutting, although doesn't look good, is a silvicultural prescription, specifically a regeneration method of regenerating certain species and.
So I mean, so I, I would like to know that, you know.
Yep.
I mean, again, I don't even know the site, it could have gone completely according to plan and be the perfect choice for the forestry of the site. I don't even know, so I, I can't comment on it, but just as a forester saying, clear cutting is a tool and if it's used properly, it can regenerate more valued species for wildlife or for dollars. It can still protect, you know, all the different water and soil qualities. I don't know the site, I can't address it without being out there. So if that is a good choice, then, or if those questions would be posed and answered by that site, then, I'm happy.
Are we off base in asking you to come up with a place that you know meets the requirement of the thirty percent that we're talking about? And get back enough so that we could set a time or a date to at least go somewhere? Otherwise, we're further along, further along, and I don't want to get to a point maybe where, um, you know, all of a sudden the fall's gone. I mean, I know we're only still in summer, but, but I don't want that to happen. So how much work are we talking about for you to be able to?
Landowner?
Yes. Okay, so, so now that's not, kind of forgive me for interrupting, but I, I, that's not me.
I would have to go back to a landowner, and again, like Ken's mentioning, this is me not saying, you know, am I gonna say, hey, we want to tour your property?
Right.
If this landowner says, yes, I have a forester, you were my forester, it turned out like this, then I don't want you guys to think that I'm cherry picking the cases either.
Yeah.
So those are the jobs that I can obviously show and go to very quickly because I've got personal time in them already. But if I'm driving down the road, I can look out there and say, that's thirty square feet, but I suppose to the board and to the townspeople or, or and to Ken, like we just mentioned, is that gonna be okay if we just all of a sudden show up with cars on their parking lot and the driveway and walk into the woods and.
Hope we never leave the road, stay in the woods and just look, or even just drive by and say, that's thirty square feet per acre right there. You don't even have to get out of the cab. The other thing I think we need to take a look at is forested wetlands and be out there walking around and say.
Is it or is it not?
Yeah.
And would this be covered by this or this?
Currently, this is protected in the town and not by the state, to get a real sense of what a forested wetland is. Because there are no ducks there.
Not protected with shade retention requirements, but still.
Yeah, still protected with the regulations of timber harvesting, just not with short land, so.
How many acres can you clear cut?
Clear cut starts at five acres and greater, and then it depends, there's three categories, five to twenty, um, twenty to seventy-five, and then seventy-five to two fifty, two fifty being the maximum size clear cut. And then once, you know, if you own less than a hundred acres, you can clear cut the whole hundred acres. You just, there's regeneration standards that come into play after that, it has to be regenerated in five years.
So if we had a, a site that had fifty acres on it and was a lot of forested wetland only protected by the town?
Yeah.
They could, if it wasn't protected by the town being one, it could be a clear cut. They wouldn't even need the thirty square feet per, of basal area per acre?
If they own under a hundred, they would have to in five years have it regenerated.
Regeneration.
Is that planting or natural?
Luckily, we live in Maine and it's usually, you don't have to plant.
It grows up.
So we're not ready to make a decision as to the win yet. We've gotta come to a, a decision that, what we're gonna say, and then we'll decide.
The winds from the board that we do want to look at this, we don't want to touch it, we like it how it is, or there is a problem here, or it could be adjusted.
Yeah, but can we, we can't make that decision if, at least before we receive some things.
You may say, I like the ordinance how it is, I don't want to change it. Or you may, or you may say, let's do some site warrants, look, I think we could reduce some regulations here for timber harvesting only, or maybe get rid of the local regulations altogether.
I think we need to save it.
Because again, my thought and what I said last.
The site visit is gonna be real important.
If, if I can clear cut ten acres, but I can't put a doghouse out there, that doesn't sound fair. So if I can't build anything out there, no sheds, no doghouses, I can't put a road or driveway, I can't do anything, but I can cut.
But it's gonna reroute in five years.
Yeah, maybe. Some, some.
Come on there.
This isn't gonna reroute in five years, he's gonna be momentarily.
But that's why we're signing.
Exactly, right.
Don't, don't put the two in the same basket.
No.
Oliver, Stephen, can you steer us towards some homework to get our arms around the review anyway of allowable visit area? The whole rigmarole of what you, what you need to cut and what you need to leave.
Yes, you'd be looking at, um, so section one for water quality, specifically the statewide standards, so that starts on page eleven. And then Natural Resource Protection Act, which is twenty-six, which is gonna protect sedimentation of waters. And then, uh, there's the, um, Harvest Notifications, Clear Cutting and Liquidation Harvesting Rules, specifically the Forest Practices Act forty-three. So that's gonna be where the clear cut and regeneration standards will be.
Um, what was the first one, the, that would be page eleven?
Page eleven, starting at page eleven, that's statewide standards.
All right, anybody else? Okay, guys, thank you.
You guys, the word is gonna kind of go on the site.
And then we'll come back at a meeting next week maybe, be able to have a, a time, assuming that meets with you guys, then we can go from there.
I was gonna say we have.
Thank you. Say it, it's on there.
So maybe we can.
It, we have it on. It's online and read as well, but I can, I'll drop off a few more, um, probably, you know, we can do it tomorrow or next week if that's. And then once again, all the full laws, if you want to get really into the weeds, they're on there too. It's fun, it puts me to sleep. Any other questions you guys can give me?
Thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on, we are in business, we're looking at, um, Seventh Street, EPL at Seventh Street.
What happened with the, not the rock, but with the loanee, was that a public hearing?
Yes, we're just there because it's old business, we're continuing, we have one set up for the seventh of September and then one set up for the twenty-first of September. I think the seventh is the cell soul, and I think the twenty-first is the. Yes, it is, it's just the reminder one, I mean, let's go. Okay, one, uh, Seventh Street, what do you got, Ken?
We have three of them together, I think one missed off the agenda that we just need to set a time to site walks.
We're gonna be able to get three of them in at the same time, they all close?
I think so.
What's that?
They're not all closed, but I think we can get all three of them.
Yeah, okay.
You've already looked at them all and feel like we should look at them, so.
Two of them could use a site visit, the third one probably, so that third one may be kicked off the list when I get more information, but.
Okay. What are we talking, as far as you're concerned, as far as the wind? We're talking about the, an odd week?
Well, we're three weeks out till the next meeting.
We have two open Thursdays.
To be the third Thursday away, yes, we have two open Thursdays.
No sense in having two open Thursdays.
In the summertime.
Yes, two open Saturdays too, but that was made it to a Thursday.
The Acton Fair will be rolling strong.
Uh, next week, uh, is anybody going to the Acton Fair next Thursday?
Well, just thinking the cars line up along.
We will be driving by it, but.
Seventh is somewhere right before the trading post, right?
Correct.
We were there recently.
Yeah. And then the other one's on West Shore, the other ones, after that's Chipmunk.
We can make them around.
Twenty-fourth, Thirty-first, that's a little before night of day, but.
Also Thirty-first one's on, I mean, we don't have to deal if there's possibly gonna be the Thursday night traffic, we'll have to get around there, but we're gonna all of a sudden run out of lightness.
Yeah.
If we're not careful. Everybody okay on the Thirty-first?
Yeah. Which one?
For the tree sidewalks, we're gonna try and do three. We're gonna have to start earlier than seven o'clock though.
I can do six. Six.
Six.
Six. Six thirty.
We're gonna meet here?
Yep.
All right, so August thirty-first. Everybody good with that then?
Six of four.
She's getting her reality.
Many of them look like they're on the side, aren't they, but yeah, time change is coming quick.
In the streetlights, I'm one, you never say.
Chipmunk Run is down in.
Pretty Snake off Anderson Cove.
Basin, yeah.
And then West Shore Drive and Seventh Street.
Is that way out in the bayou?
Bayou, which one?
Chipmunk Run is one of those damn things where you have to walk on the top of the escrow.
Yeah.
And, and you can take a small car out there?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Small car preferably, actually.
Yeah, it's more of a bicycle, doesn't think it's terrifying.
So here at the town, well, all right, so we still, we're gonna go through the first one as far as, you want to at least look at this tonight, or are we?
I wouldn't bother, we'll do the site walk, I get enough information, get together, put those in.
Okay.
It'll be good.
All right. Do you have anything from?
No.
Need to go to Forestry Office? I saw a blank there. I don't see a blank there, I see one here. Anybody else, anything?
Oh, Robbie or Sue?
Correct. Is that on the backside or?
I wrote it.
No, I, I just told you one thing.
All right, that's. All right.
I'll let the property owners.
Anybody else have anything? Motion to adjourn then, I guess? Second? All right. Thanks for doing.